At this time, I call the December meeting of the County Commission to order. And we have with us again, as I looked, it's been one year since you were here. But we have Reverend Keith Etheridge, pastor of Double Branches Baptist Church. We'll give our invocation and we'll remain standing for Commissioner Clyde on the pledge of allegiance. If you would go to the podium, Richard.
All right, let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for Lincoln County and we're grateful to live here. And Lord, we ask your blessings upon every person, every business, every home, every family here in Lincoln County, especially at Christmas time. And Lord, we ask that you bless all of those who serve and work in our county government and our city government. Lord, we pray for our commissioners as they meet tonight and conduct business. We pray that you give them wisdom at all times, Lord. I know many times they face difficult decisions, Lord, and so we pray to grant them wisdom to do all that. Always do what is good and right and best for both the present and the future of Lincoln County. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pray to the leaders of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every king and justice for all.
Reverend Etheridge, we appreciate you taking your time out to come and be with us on this Christmas season meeting. Thank you for it. The next item on the agenda is item four, the approval of the minutes of the previous meetings that were sent to you by the clerk. Is there any additions to the minutes? If not, is there a motion that we accept and has sent to us?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion's carried. Item eight is the approval of the agenda as printed. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion of the agenda? Chair, here's none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion's carried. Item six, A, is the Office of Emergency Services Director Broom. Director Broom is not with us, as you can see, he had back surgery a few weeks ago. And I think, I think we had, I don't see it right here, but I think we got like a hundred and sixteen ambulance calls last month and all the other materials in your book. We'll accept that. Let's keep him in our prayers. Six B is the Recreation Department Director Glaze.
Good evening, Chairman, Board of Commissioners.
Good evening.
You have my written report in front of you, do you have any questions?
I see they're working on your cameras.
Yes, sir, they came back and laser graded again. I sent pictures out of the inch and a half ring we had last week where it was still standing. They said they'll come back and grade again and put every, reset everything and make sure they could get it, or that's not going to hold.
I was out the other day, I noticed that the people are working on your fields again. Basketball starts January the ninth, which is next Monday night, is that right?
No, January the ninth.
January the ninth, I'm sorry. Okay. And I see you're going to have the Recreation Department and the Road Legend Truck Club be having their third annual pile of joy for toys for the children in your county. That's good. Any questions, Director Glaze?
Yes, good.
If not?
I left my GM open with basketball practice on one of them.
Go ahead.
That's it.
Six C is the Finance Department Director Doss.
Chairman of the Commission, if you have my written report and if you'll allow me to give this verbal report. For our cash in banks, our general fund, excuse me, our general fund, we have $2,983,661.27. Our water reserve fund, $339,905.31. Our water fund, $153,301.90. Our payroll fund, $3,911.58. Our SPOSS six fund, $589,758.59. The T SPOSS fund, $687,866.84. The solid waste fund, $598,042.61. The family connections fund, $92,646.54. The workforce development fund, $55,235.11. The American Rescue Plan Fund, $1,449,308.40. The Drug Education Fund, $36,962.26. The E911 Fund, $80,605.38. The Hotel Motel Fund, $60,726.12. The jail fee fund, $20,420.30. The emergency fund, $296,303.75. The T, excuse me, the SPOSS seven fund, $733,316.13. Short-lived assets fund, $2,500. The sinking fund number two for the water fund, $5,008. The total cash in bank for all of our checking accounts as of the end of November is $8,198,160.78. Chairman, I've also, the Commissioners have also provided you the Raymond James statement for the end of September. We have, end of November, thank you. We have $2 million in deposits in CDs as Raymond James at the end of the, end of that period. We have accrued interest on those of $6,627.74. Chairman, that's the end of my verbal report.
Any questions, Director Doss on the finance? If not, thank you. The six D is Public Works Department Director Seymour.
Chairman members of the board, you have my written reports. I don't have anything to add to those unless you have questions, I'll be more than happy to answer those.
Any questions, Director Seymour? If not, are we fixed? Say something to them there.
Yes.
We got a ring somewhere.
Yeah, I hear it, take it. It's a little reversed, yeah.
Okay, we're going to move on to our public hearing. Is there a motion that we go into the public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion and a second to go into the public hearing and discussion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion's carried, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir, on December the fifth, 2022, the planning commission heard the following request. The applicant is Richard Smith, map five, parcel fifteen, better known as 1850 Gilspoint Road, consists of two point zero seven acres, currently is on C1. His request is for a side setback variance. My board heard the request and recommends approval to the Board of Commissioners for a ten-foot side setback variance. This property, since it was converted to C1 several months back, the side setback is actually twenty foot on commercial property. He needed an additional ten foot to make the buildings work, still have enough room to get boats backed in, and so my board recommends approval of a ten-foot setback.
Have a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve this for a ten-foot setback variance. Okay, is anybody here that's got any thing to say against the commission voting for this setback? Then anybody here to speak for it? I know Mr. Smith is here, you don't look like he needs to say much. Okay. Nobody's here, is there a motion, is any questions, Director Seymour? Okay, is there a motion that we come out of our public hearing?
That's so moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson to come out of the public hearing and discussion on the motion. Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and we are out of our public hearing. Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission for the setback of ten foot?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion's carried. Thank you, Mr. Smith, y'all get started. You're welcome to stay now if you want to. Next item is budget items and driveway road damage, Reverend Denise Freeman. Ms. Freeman is not here. We'll move on to item number nine, the Great Public Land Giveaway of 2022, Mr. Al Gray. Mr. Gray, you know, state your name, address, five minutes. This chair will throw you out every few nights. He's walked out of me here.
Al Gray, 2573 Salem Church Road, Lincoln, or Lincoln County. I've distributed a timeline for each commissioner, because I don't think it's any point repassion this whole timeline, but what this timeline shows is that this whole process involving these two public roads that got closed off that we discussed in October. This, this matter started in December 2019 when we noticed surveying going on. And then it continued on and, and I thought we had some, some understanding that, that the commission was wary of all these things back in, in 2020. I did an open records west with the core engineers and got a whole disc of everything they had done, twenty some odd parcels, and then, and I expressed at the time that it was going to cause big problems for the canyon, but I wanted to stay out of it. It didn't work out. And, and I went down through the whole timeline, it goes on up to today. Right in the middle, smack in the middle of this timeline, and I, and I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, you providing me all those background emails between the previous property owner and the county, trying to work out all those, the myths that a property owner had, and somewhat alluded to in his correspondence. But that's the stuff that was going on in the background, right slap dab in the middle of this thing, and that bothers me. It really bothers me a lot. And in, in terms of giving away the land, if you look at the topography of that piece, and I think I put an exhibit in there that shows like a hundred and fifty acres, fifty-eight acres, it's basically cut off by the topography, the creeps and everything's run into the lake. Basically, I think the federal government's kind of selling off that land. And with everything that was going on then, and the way it looks to me, a lot of it's still going on, that land could not be sold by anybody other than this new land owner. Because there's no easements in there. The court claims they don't have any easement, but there's a DOT record of what public road is I brought up before. I don't understand why somebody gave away a piece of property worth four, five million dollars. The reason for it can't be good. Either way you go. And I'll just leave it at there. Right now, there's a gate up, it stands in opposition to citizens' right of passage, thereby in fact granting all future sale of 150 acres of geographically isolated land worth millions to present owner, Lee, and successors and his signs. And I sent, I gave that to you, and that's what I'm talking about. I'm afraid that there's a gate up there, it's locked, and that's saying the whole world, you can't go back in here. And I don't know what's happened in the law, but the easement that's blocked off a given period of time isn't lost. So I don't know what's going on with that. I'm just very concerned about our country. I put out a separate enclosure, the number three, it's, it's an article out of CFO Magazine that says for chief financial officer, these are the biggest financial people in the world that get this magazine. And it's some years old, CFO Magazine's published articles, is your cash in danger? After all, Mr. Miles Swiv itself discovered its treasury and invested in something called, that was called cash, but lost $370 million in fake cash, and this is on a blue chip company. The problem didn't get fixed all these years later. Now that fake cash is in every 401K and pension, including yours. See what happens when officials responsible for public money and assets hide things? But I came here to talk about something, I want to make sure I have time to get in, and I might even make, get a trophy made up for Director Seymour, in all sincerity. On a brighter note, and I hope his buddies at DOT don't fault him, a decade ago, Robbie Seymour got the master spreadsheet for T SPOSS from me when the Regional Commission and the folks in Augusta wouldn't do it. The Department of Transportation didn't know I had it and got awfully embarrassed when, when I used it for the people, the people here, the people in 13 counties. I even had to send it to them so they'd have it. So that was a good deed. And I mentioned Director Seymour, he's been up here, I guess, two terms of Walker Norman, two of Wade Johnson, now another two for Walker Norman, and he's had to put up with y'all all these years, I don't know how in the world he's kept his head. And the last thing, I guess I'd say, I was set free this week. I was set free when I realized that almost every pastor in Georgia on Sunday had urged people to vote for a wife theater on Tuesday. Ephesians 5:11 says, "Have nothing to do with the fruitless deeds of darkness, but rather expose them." And then John 11:35, Jesus went. And I guess I'll close my comments with a song that I was singing when I was walking those roads. I was sinking deep in sin, far from the peaceful shore, very distant sinking in, seeking to rise no more. But the master of the sea heard my despairing cry, and from the waters lifted me, now safe am I. Love lifted me, love lifted me, when nothing else could help, love lifted me, love lifted me, love lifted me, when nothing else could help, love lifted me. Thank you, gentlemen. Merry Christmas and a new year.
Mr. Gray, I'm going to check with Little Roy and Lizzy to see if they can put you in the band with them, you might, you might travel and sing with them a little bit.
Well, I'm not going around the courthouse singing some Christmas carols at five.
That'd be good. I didn't know you could sing. Item 10 is the tasers for the sheriff's office, Captain, thank you, Taylor.
Commissioners, Chairman, thank y'all for letting me come in tonight. I think Director Doss has provided you with the taser printout as far as the cough and everything for the next five years. The sheriff's office had tasers for a while, this is nothing new. What we have run into is that over the last probably three or four years, they've become outdated, like every new technology improves over time. And what we're looking here is to purchase eight brand-new tasers for the sheriff's office, and including, and that eight will be six, what they call handles, which is training outfit and files for six other users, which would include admin, staff, and investigator.
How many are you asking for?
Eight altogether. It comes out to be six other handles which attach to these other eight. And the six handles, as they're called, I don't know why they're called handles, but the six handles are...
Captain Taylor, what you asking for tonight is that we approve eight tasers and the accessories that go with them at a price of $33,978.60, is that correct?
Yes, sir, over five...
Is it further true that Director Doss, that we will pay this on an annual basis for the next five years in the amount of $6,795.80 per year?
Yes, sir.
Director Doss, is it not still true that this amount of money has been put into the 2223 budget for this purchase?
Yes, sir, that is what you're asking, yes, sir.
Is there a motion that we accept it and make the payments on an annual basis?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
The second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion by any members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Commissioner Collins?
Captain Taylor, I would just ask, if at any time you decide we need more than eight, please run back up here and see.
I will.
You and I have had a conversation about that.
Yes, sir, we did.
And you say run, Commissioner? Well, I would like to see that, but yes.
Okay.
I, I just appreciate the board, we really do need these to give our staff the best equipment that we can, and I think that beyond, this will, this will cover each deputy that is ownership, we run two deputies a ship, this will cover each deputy on the ship, each deputy will have a brand-new taser, and I think for the immediate future, I think that's all we need at this time.
Any other questions from the board? Here's none, we're called for the vote, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion's carried, Director Doss, you and Captain Taylor can get together and complete this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Captain Taylor. The voice of the red devil. Item number 11, budget amendment, Leisure Services Director Blunt is not here, but Director Doss is going to take this, and we've already discussed it, we know what it is, so make it quick, thank you.
Yes, sir, Chairman, Commissioners, I'm asking that you approve the budget amendments as submitted. We, we budgeted $34,000 in additional revenue over the last two commission meetings for accepting grants, we have to have offsetting revenue, or, excuse me, offsetting expenses, and we're modifying the budget of the Leisure Services Department to cover those expenses, to cover those grants. So I'm asking you to approve the amendments as proposed.
You heard the request from Director Doss to make the amendment, is there a motion to accept the budget amendments and Leisure Services?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Collins made the motion, Commissioner Clyde seconded, any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion's carried. Item number 12, 2023 alcoholic beverage renewal, Clerk McKellar.
Yes, sir, we have several businesses coming for the board tonight that have met all of their requirements for their 2023 alcohol license. The first one being Mr. Jason Rafer, owner of Clats Crossing, for a Class A beer and wine off premises.
All right, you heard the request for Clyde's Crossing, Mr. Jason Rafer, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion?
I've been abstaining, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Clyde abstains, he owns the property. Is the reason he's abstaining, he doesn't run the business, but he owns the property that the business is in. Have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by, I mean, Collins, I said that, and Henderson, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I voted with it, there it goes. Commissioner Tankson is out of state today, that's the reason he's not here, meant to say that at the beginning. Clerk McKellar?
Yes, sir, our second one is Ms. Morgan Dupay, manager of the Silk Creek Marina and Resort, for a Class A beer and wine off premises.
Okay, the Dupays at Silk Creek Marina and Resort, beer and wine, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Now, the motions, I second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson, that we grant the renewal, any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion's carried, Clerk McKellar?
Our next is Mr. Alan Holloway, manager of Rock and Branch, for a Class B beer and wine on premises.
Okay, is there a motion that we grant this approval for the beer and wine on premises?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
The second?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion's carried, Clerk McKellar?
Our next is Mr. Stacy Eric Kennerly, commander of American Legion Post 194, for a Class C liquor, beer, and wine on premises.
All right, Commander, American Legion Police, Post 194, Class C liquor, beer, and wine, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion's carried, Clerk McKellar?
Our next is Mr. Marcus Mason, commander of American Legion Post 597, for a Class C liquor, beer, and wine on premises.
Okay, Marcus Mason, commander of American Legion Post 597, same thing, Class C beer, liquor, and wine, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion, second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion's carried, Clerk McKellar?
Our last one for this evening is Ms. Sherry Landry, manager of the Fishing Creek Bait and Tackle, for a Class A and a Class B beer and wine on and off premises.
Okay, Ms. Landry, manager of Fishing Creek Bait and Tackle. Been a long time since we've done this until they just reopen back up, is there a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Got a motion, is that second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde, any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion's carried. Item number 13, retirement plan amendments that we have discussed at length last week, Director Doss?
Chairman, Commissioners, we have three separate things that we need to do. I have, at Commissioner Collins' request, I have provided the summary for the amendment. And first thing that we have, Chairman, is we have a resolution to amend the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia Defined Benefit Plan for Lincoln County employees and to adopt the Association of County Commissioners 401A Defined Contribution Plan for employees of Lincoln County.
Can we act on that one now?
Sir?
Can we act on that one now?
Yes, so this, we need to, we need to do this resolution first, would you like me to read the resolution, Chairman?
I don't think so, we know what it is, unless one of the Commissioners want it read. Okay, is there a motion, we adopt the resolution to amend the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia Defined Benefit Plan for Lincoln County employees to adopt the ACIS G418 Defined Contribution Plan for Lincoln County employees? Have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair, here's none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known with saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion's carried, Director Doss?
Chairman, our second motion is we have another resolution or an agreement, a resolution that we need to adopt, and, and it is the plan amendment number one. And it is the plan amendment number one to adoption agreement number one of the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia Defined Benefit Plan for Lincoln County employees. We need a motion to adopt that resolution.
You heard the request, and he read it, and I won't. So is there a motion that we adopt amendment two, I mean amendment one?
I made the motion to adopt.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Director Dawson.
Chairman, our final motion on this action is we need a motion to, we need a motion to adopt the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia four oh one A Defined Contribution Plan for Lincoln County employees.
Okay, you heard the recommendations from the finance director on adopting the four oh one A Defined Contributions. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number fourteen is the ACCG Workers' Compensation Fund. Director Dawson.
Chairman and Commissioners, we have received our premium notice for our twenty-twenty-three workers' comp. It's a hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. It is six hundred and fifty dollars less than last year. I'm asking the board to give me the approval to pay this invoice.
You heard the recommendation, a motion to approve to pay the workers' compensation, a hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item fifteen is the RFP twenty-two dash zero zero six, the new Ag Show Arena. Director Seymour is at the podium. But I also want to recognize that the extension director, as we all, old folks call her, the county agent, which all this will come under her out there. She's, she's here with us if you have any questions. Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. On November the seventeenth, we opened up bids for the new show arena that would be the addition to the agricultural center out at the Kirk Gordon Complex. The load, we had four builders. The low bid was Riley Contracting at two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. I would ask the board to not only award the bid to Riley Contracting as a little bidder, but also give the chairman the authority to sign a contract and execute a contract on that behalf.
Okay, you heard the request that we accept the bid of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars from Riley Contracting. Give me the authority to sign the contract. Is there a motion?
I made a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion?
I got one quick question.
Commissioner Clyde.
I just, I would like the contract that we're talking about. Would Ben review that before we...
He would actually write it. He wrote the one on the original Ag building, so I would ask him to write the contract for the new building.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay, just before everybody will know, this is for a eighty-eight by a hundred and forty.
Correct.
Metal I and beam building, which will house the show arena under it, and no accessories of that. The other part of that will come in separate bids. This is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. What will probably be somewhere around a six hundred thousand dollar expenditure when we finish. A lot of this money has come, Senator Lee Anderson, Representative Rob Leverett, got us three hundred thousand from the state. And we're hoping to get about fifty to a hundred thousand from, we hope to get a hundred, could be fifty from USDA. They gave us ninety-nine thousand on the, on the building that's out there. And then, of course, the county will do some in-kind contributions, which are things we got to do. Plus, we would use some...
In-kind?
ARP money. Is that where the rest of it comes from? Maybe a little sales tax?
Yes, sir. The American Rescue Plan.
So we will have, we will have to pick up the rest of it from, from the county, which we're prepared to do if we have to. Anyway, tonight, it's on those two motions. Any other discussions? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. You have anything you want to say? You didn't say it all. We want to go eat, don't we? Okay, item number sixteen is Gumby Lift Station Pump. Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. As you're all aware, I brought it to your attention at the work session. We had a pump go bad in the Gumby Lift Station, which is part of the Blackjack Sewerage Project. And I've already given the go-ahead to have this replaced under the emergency ordinance, but need your approval to expand eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars to calibration control and automation. And that money would come from the repair and replacement budget of the water fund.
Water reserve fund?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you heard the request. We talked about this last week, eleven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars to replace this pump at the Gumby Lift Station up in the water reserve fund. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
You better, we'll cut your sewers off.
I know it. I know it. They was gonna be happy.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Clyde. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number seventeen is the fuel maintenance upgrade. Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. As you're aware, this is also another item we discussed in work session. The fuel system that we currently use today to fuel all of county vehicle fleet, as well as some outside entities, was put in in two thousand and twelve. And so it has not had any upgrades done to the software portion of it in those ten years. And so that I bring to y'all for a, an upgrade to that system. And this would pretty much put it on the cloud instead of having to house it on a local server, which gives us a lot more accessibility and protection. And that cost us twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents. Those funds would be expended from the T-Splash.
Okay, you heard the request on the equipment for the fleet gas policy located at the, located at the Public Works Office, twenty-four thousand, one hundred and forty with two dollars and fifty cents. They pay you out of T-Splash funds. I hope we don't bust that cloud. Every month, we putting more and more stuff up in that cloud. Is there a motion?
I made a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, I second.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion to spend twenty-four thousand more dollars? Oh, don't hear it. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item number eighteen is the Association County Commissioners of Georgia Annual Dues along with NACO. That's in the amount of, total amount of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents. This also includes workers' compensation group help, retirement, some of that that we members of. The county commissioners is seventeen thousand, seven hundred and fifty with the Association County Commissioners of Georgia, four hundred and fifty with NACO, the National Association County of Georgia Dues, twenty-three. Total twenty-three, seventeen, sixty-five. Is there a motion?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Item nineteen is the Holidays in Old Lincoln Town sponsorship with the Chamber of Commerce. We talked about this last week at the work session. I think what we agreed to was we would pay five hundred thousand, I mean, five hundred, five hundred dollars to the Chamber of Commerce to help with the expenses and all of the Christmas parade that would come from our motel hotel, hotel motel tax. Is there a motion?
I made that motion, Mr. Chairman, for the five hundred dollars.
Is there a... Second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Collins. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. We also have with us tonight, and I'm glad, I'm glad to see him, hope he'll come as regularly as he can. He is a member of our Development Authority, with Stephen Dawkins is with us. We glad, we glad to have people from all various boards. I think we have something like sixty-something people that serve on boards that the commissioners appoint. Good to have you with us. Let me also say in closing, on behalf of the board of commissioners and the employees of Lincoln County Constitutional Office, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We'll be back here January, I think, the eighth or ninth, twenty twenty-three. Can y'all believe that? Is there a motion that we adjourn?
I say move.
Is I second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Clyde, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion on the motion? Chair is none. All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. We stand adjourned.